Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,203 regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Ms. D'Naro.
Present.
Mr. Bonjero is not here. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Karen Magna is here. Chairman Wolschow?
Is here. Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. For the folks in our audience who haven't been to one of our meetings before, the format is we'll read each of these petitions. There's only a couple on our agenda this evening. We'll read them one at a time. Our planning staff will give background information on the petition. We'll then ask that the petitioner come forward and speak to the petition. We will have some questions for them, some dialogue back and forth, and then anyone else in our audience who wishes to speak for or against the petition will be given an opportunity to come forward after the petitioner to give their input, and then we'll make our decision. There are some fans running in the room right now because the air conditioning is not working. We do realize that, and it may be a little bit more difficult to hear us because of that, so we'll try to do what we can to speak up and make sure that you can hear us. But please bear with us, given this climate situation. With that, if our secretary is ready, we'll start with item number one on our public hearing agenda.
Petition 2023-06-02-09 submitted by Leo Solve Building, Inc., requesting special waiver use approval under Section 5.02 of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to develop a planned residential development consisting of five buildings and a total of 11 residential dwelling units on properties at 35755 and 35841 Plymouth Road located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Yale and Levan in the northeast quarter of Section 32.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you again. This is a request to develop a planned residential development. This is the former Cochrims Farm Market, which is on the south side of Plymouth Road between Yale and Levan Streets. The property is just under two acres in size. It has 334 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road. The depth is roughly 310 feet, and the zoning, as you can see from this map, is C2 general business. Planned residential developments are treated as a special waiver use under Section 5.02 of the zoning ordinance. PRDs, as they are called, are afforded considerable design flexibility, including modifications in lot sizes and yard requirements, and also uses that are not permitted within the zoning district are allowed when it is determined that such changes will result in more efficient land use and are compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding area. So what we're looking at this evening is a request for residential development on property that is zoned commercial, which is authorized under the special section of the zoning ordinance. Planned residential developments are intended to help overcome natural and other unique obstacles or constraints that pose challenges to land development under conventional design standards. So immediately to the west and to the east of this property are commercial properties, including the car wash and a combined auto repair and U-Haul business that both front on Plymouth Road and are zoned similarly, C2 general business. And then to the south, there are single-family homes that are part of the Elmira Court subdivision, which is zoned N1 neighborhood. And then north across Plymouth Road is the Ford Transmission Plant. So the proposal would involve the development of a road and 11 dwelling units. There would be a total of five buildings, including four duplex units and one triplex. The access would be provided via a 24-foot wide road from Plymouth Road. This road is positioned, as you can see, near the center of the property, where it would extend south for a distance of about 130 feet and then intersect with a second street that runs in an east-to-west direction, forming a T-street pattern. None of the proposed driveways for the homes would have direct access to Plymouth Road. All homes would access the proposed streets. So Units 1 through 7 would have access to the street along the south side of the development, and then Units 8 through 11 on the north side would have access from the street that extends south from Plymouth Road. The building that is in the southwest corner of the property is the only building that would contain three units or a triplex, and that's Units 1 through 3. The setbacks of Units 9 and 10 from Plymouth Road would each be 30 feet, so the two units closest to Plymouth Road would have a setback of 30 feet from the right-of-way. And then Units 1 through 7 along the south side of the development would all have a setback of 35 feet from the south property line. Each unit would have a one-car attached garage. The homes would be a combination of one and two stories in height, mostly single ranches or ranch-style homes. They would have two bedrooms, a living and dining area, as well as a kitchen, full bath plus a half-bath, and then laundry and mechanical room. For any of the units that have an upper floor, it's a bonus room effectively, and that would contain a third bedroom and then another full bath. Each condominium would have a gross floor area of roughly 1,600 square feet. When you combine the floor areas of all 11 units, a total of 17,963 square feet. That represents a usable floor area in a percentage of lot area of 21 percent and is well below the zoning ordinance limit of 35 percent. So what we do is we look at the square footage of all the units combined. That cannot exceed 35 percent of the lot area, and in this case, it is the equivalent of roughly 21 percent. So it is, again, well within the zoning ordinance limit. The buildings would be constructed out of a combination of brick and vinyl siding. There's a rendering that shows that. The roofs, as you can see, would be peaked, consisting of asphalt shingles. A landscape plan has been submitted with the application. It shows landscaping along the front, the sides, and along the rear of the property. That's something we'll discuss a little bit in greater detail this evening. And then to manage the storm runoff, there is a bio-retention and swell basin that would be constructed along portions of the east and south sides of the property. This feature would be planted with trees, as well as a seed mix that would provide and would provide onsite treatment of the storm water. No PRD streetscape improvements are proposed at this time, plus no internal sidewalks are shown on the plan. The master plan does designate the subject site as corridor commercial, which does allow for apartments and attached and upper-story residential units. Master deed and bylaws were submitted earlier today, so we do have that in our possession and can be referred to this evening if necessary. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from our Engineering Division dated June 30th that reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver uses at this time, but would like to not the following items." That's a typo. Number one, the subject parcels are assigned the addresses of 35755 and 35841 Plymouth Road. The legal descriptions included with the submitted drawings appear to be correct and should be used in conjunction with the proposed project. Should the project move forward, the developer will need to combine the existing parcels into a single parcel with a meets-and-bounds description encompassing the entire site. Also, they will need to provide a copy of the existing Plymouth Road easement or dedicate the right-of-way for Plymouth Road to the city, which will be forwarded to the Michigan Department of Transportation. Number three, the existing parcels are currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer, Water Main, and Storm Sewer. The submitted drawings indicate extensions of the existing utilities to service the proposed structures, which we do not believe will impact the existing systems negatively. The proposed development will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, and per the submitted drawings, stormwater detention is indicated, but we will need to do a thorough review of the plans once they are submitted for permitting. Five, the developer will need to obtain permits from the Michigan Department of Transportation for any work within the Plymouth Road right-of-way. Number six, per the proposed layouts, all roadways and storm sewers, including detention basins, will be privately owned. Sanitary sewer and water main will be public, located within a dedicated easements on the site. And seven, no construction or soil disturbance, including dumping of material, should occur on the site until the owner obtains the appropriate permits, engineering earthwork, soil erosion, sedimentation control, et cetera. And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated August 1st that reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations: concern for rapid access to water supply for Buildings 9 and 10; difficult task for fire trucks to lay hose and advance on the new dead-end streets where two new hydrants are placed. Existing or new hydrants could not be identified on the preliminary plan set. An official plan set. Please identify Plymouth Road hydrants at or near the proposed property development. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Cookla, Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated August 2nd and signed by Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. A letter of no objection coming from the Inspection Department dated August 15th and signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. A letter of no objection dated from the Department of Finance dated July 14th and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. A similar letter of no objection dated July 5th coming from the Office of the Treasurer and signed by Linda Sheal, Treasurer for the City of Livonia. And then a letter from the Assessment Department dated July 5th that indicates that the plan to develop a planned residential development consisting of five buildings, the parcels involved will need to be combined in order to properly conform, and that letter is signed by Kathy Sederlet, Residential Appraiser. We also have two items of correspondence, one which is actually two emails from the same residents, Arlene and Glenn Openlander. And the first email reads, and this email is dated August 3rd, "To whom it may concern, we live at 35824 Elmira Street, Livonia, Michigan. We received a letter from the City Planning Commission regarding the Leo Solve Building Company, requesting for development of five buildings and 11 residential units on 35755 and 35841 Plymouth Road. We will be out of town on Tuesday, August 15th and cannot attend the public hearing on this issue. I therefore would like to express my views on this development here." The first point that I want to share is that the reason we purchased our home at 35824 Elmira is for the privacy and seclusion that the forested area of 35755 and 35841 provide from the traffic and noise on Plymouth Road and the large Ford Transmission Plant. My second point is that if this forested is removed, will new foliage be planted that will maintain the privacy and seclusion we now expect? The forest blocks the unpleasant view of traffic and the Ford Manufacturing Plant, and it helps reduce the noise levels. My last concern is that any buildings erected will be close to the wall currently between our home and the vacant lots behind us. If someone from your office could please respond to my concerns." And again, that letter is signed, or that email is provided by Arlene and Glenn Openlander. They also, I believe, yes, from Robert Openlander on an email dated August 7th indicates, "If you could please just submit my original email with my final comments in this email. I have spoken to some of the neighbors who received the petition letter from the city, and it appears they are not pleased with losing the forested area. I believe if the foliage they plant hides the view like the current forest, people will be pleased. The problem with the current plan is that deciduous trees lose their leaves for six to seven months of the year in Michigan, and if they are small, it will be years before they grow to any useful size to block the view like the current forest." If they can plant some large coniferous trees, they would block the view all year long, and it is easier to obtain a large coniferous tree from a nursery than a small deciduous sapling. Again, that email is provided by Mr. Robert Openlander. And then lastly, we received just late this evening an email from Doug Doyle dated August 15th that reads, "Hi, I was planning on attending the meeting tonight, but a family emergency came up. I do have some concerns. One, the size of the homes. Two, are they adding streetlights? Three, the trees on the back of the lot. There are some safety concerns for my family. Number four, will they be adding new landscaping? And five, what are the buildings for? What size? How tall? I'm hoping there will be a second meeting so I can voice my concerns. Thanks, Doug Doyle." Who gives his address at 35862 Elmira. And with that email, he included several photographs, mostly of the wooded condition that exists between his home and this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Wolschow. Mr. Toramina, I note that the stormwater detention retention basins are to the south and east of the proposed new homes. Is there any reason why they could not be located in the setback between the sidewalk on the north side of the site and the Units 10 and 9?
Well, I'm not a civil engineer that can answer that question.
I just meant from an ordinance perspective.
There's no reason from an ordinance perspective. I think it strictly involves the engineering of this thing and the grades that they have to deal with. I know that there's been quite a lot of conversation between the project engineer and the City Engineering Division on this design and where the ultimate outlet is located and what the grades of the property. So I think they've strategically located this basin in the manner that, you know, it'll work. You know, if it could be provided in that northwest corner of the property or along Plymouth Road, that would certainly be an option, but I'm not sure.
So without that engineering, there's no reason it couldn't be there?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolschow. Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our planning staff? All right. Mr. Toramina, just one question. You did note that the master plan indeed was received. We don't, we didn't have a copy in our packet. Have you had an opportunity to look at it, and is it pretty much typical verbiage that we would see?
It's very typical. I did already note one correction that needs to be made, but that was just was a reference to the number of units on the development. And yeah, if you have any specific questions, usually what we confirm is the percentage of brick that is used on the units and the unit sizes themselves. And so any questions that you have regarding that, I can reference the document, again, that we received just today.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, if there's any questions that come up that you can help us with, then we'll look to you for guidance. Thank you. If there's no other questions for our planning staff, our petitioner is in the audience as representative. If you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself with your name and address, please.
Joe Ida, 8810 Brookline, here representing Leo Solve.
Thank you, Mr. Ida. And what would you like to add from the presentation you've heard so far?
I think Mark did a wonderful job. One of the issues I think we had before is they're not for rent. They are for sale. I think that was a question that came up a while ago.
Okay.
And I think the other thing, is it going to be curbside pickup with, for garbage day? Yes, it is. Mr. Leo Solve doesn't feel that a dumpster enclosure, he doesn't like it because it brings rats and things like that, so I think those were the two issues before.
Okay. Well, let's see if there's some questions from any of our commissioners for you. If you want to stay up there, we'll see. Is there any questions for our petitioner?
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Michael.
Can you address what the landscaping is going to look like? A lot of the concerns is, are the trees. Can you address?
The trees in the back? I mean, we're not gonna, we'll do what we can to save as many trees as we can, and if we have to replant some, we will. Of course, we have to follow the landscape ordinance that's within the city up in the front, and we'll do that. Yeah, we want to be good neighbors. We're not gonna. And I actually think this is a nicer, of course, I'm biased, this is going to be a nicer development if they're worried about seeing the Ford plant and all that, you're going to have residential behind you instead of a commercial building or anything like that. Which commercial buildings, you know, bring noise of trucks, deliveries early in the morning, things like that, where you won't have that with this development.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. D'Naro. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Go ahead, Pete.
We'll give it to Mr. Ventura first.
And Mr. Ida, I apologize for maybe you've answered these questions at study, and I wasn't there last week, so. As I visited the site, you know, the uses to the east and west are very hard commercial uses, particularly to the east. And as I look at your landscape plan, it looks pretty sparse to me. And I share Mrs. D'Naro's concern about shielding this site from the surrounding uses. I mean, this is a fairly unusual location to put residential product. So number one, I'd like to see a lot more landscaping on the east and west. And somebody made the point that most of the existing trees to the north or to the south are deciduous. And I'd like to see some evergreens, some conifers there that will soften that view from the existing homes on the north side of Elmira to the south and this development. I note, however, that you have the bio-retention area to the south of the proposed homes. And my question to you, and I guess a clarification, I noticed in going through the material that we have, that the bio-retention area is a foot deep. Do I understand your data here correctly?
I can barely hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. In looking at the information that we were provided with, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. It appears that the bio-retention area is only a foot deep. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. What can you plant there? I see that you're going to plant something called, and I forgot the phrase, but it's not grass, it's something, it's some kind of a mix.
Yeah.
And can you put shrubs in there? Can you put trees in there?
I would have to ask the engineers, because a lot of times we can't put shrubs in there because it'll, whatever retention pond is, for water to sit there until it can slowly go into the storm sewer without flooding the area. So as long as it doesn't hurt the flow of the water and the management of the water, yeah, we could do something like that.
What's going on with the big area of open ground that would be to the west of Units 10 and 11?
You mean the backyards where the retention pond is, or is that where you're talking?
No, on the west, it doesn't appear to be a, I see a, I see the thing, a word called swale. Is that a retention area?
Yeah. Well, swale is where, a swale is a design of the earth.
I understand what swale is, but it doesn't, it's not a retention area. It's not the bio-retention basin that exists to the north and east, or south and east.
Right.
Okay. Is there a reason that you didn't put the bio-retention area there and in the setback between the homes and the road?
I would have to, I would have to revert to civil engineering, so I might do that.
I guess my observation is that you're only 35 feet from the block wall to the south of these homes. And for the majority of the width of the property, it's a bio-retention area that is going to limit the use of that area, I'd imagine. I can't see that people that buy these places are going to be able to go out there and put swing sets or anything else in the bio-retention area. So if the bio-retention area were moved to that open, that large open area behind Units 10 and 11 and to the location, that 30-foot setback between the sidewalk and the Units 9 and 10, that would make that area behind the homes, Units 7, 1 through 7 usable for the residents. So I'm just suggesting that this would give you some flexibility in terms of putting more landscaping in there, making that area behind the homes, the south of the homes, usable to the purchasers for more than just looking out there. And put the bio-retention area kind of out of the way of anybody's home.
I noted it. I'll let our civil engineering, well, most people that buy condos don't even go outside. But I understand exactly what you're saying, and I did write it down, and I will.
Great. How many of these, how many of these will be three-bedroom and how many will be two-bedroom?
There's going to be two of them that are three-bedroom. The other ones will be two-bedroom.
All the rest are two.
Yeah.
So it's possible you'd have people there with children.
It's possible, yes. What we found out nowadays is single moms with one child usually that are buying condos. And the reason for that is because a little bit, you can't find houses anymore, and we all know what's going on with the housing market.
Right.
And it's kind of gotten out of, out of reach for mostly single women with one child.
Okay. And I noticed a couple of renderings sitting here. Are either of these renderings this development?
No, no. That's for the next one.
Okay. So the ones we saw on the screen are what we?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wolschow.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. I think Mr. Karen Magna was next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of questions. I noticed there's a utility, utility pole, a utility line running right through the center of this property going east to west. What happens to that? Where does that get moved to?
Well, we'd have to work with DTE on bringing everything underground. So those would probably be removed. We're going to pay a lot of money for that, too.
So that won't go, move back to the residential property, the bio-retention pond? It'll just go underground through your property now?
It all depends on DTE and what they want and what they'll make us do.
Mark, is there anything on the plan that shows what will happen there?
No, the existing survey shows that line right here, I believe, is the overhead line, although it's difficult, it says utility pole. And then as you look at the plan here, it does not show that same line running across the property, so I agree with the petitioner, more than likely that it's going to have to be relocated and placed underground somewhere within an easement on the property.
Okay, that's, thank you for that.
Unless it corresponds with that street and can be saved, but David, at a minimum, they're going to have to relocate at least one, and usually it's impossible to just move one pole. You have to move several poles, so my guess is it's going to either go underground or they're going to have to move the line entirely.
Okay, thank you for that. The second question I've got is parking, street parking. Streets are narrow at 24 feet, and you've got two-bedroom and three-bedroom buildings here. And the driveways, I think, would you say, one-car garage?
One-car garage.
So if you've got more than a car or two, then there's likely going to be street parking. And with narrow streets like that, that would hinder deliveries and garbage collection, as you said earlier. So is it possible to limit this, this plan to parking on only one side of the street at all times, if parking on the street is necessary?
If, if we can do it, we will do it, yeah.
Yeah, I think you need to do that because there's, you've got to be able to get in and out of UPS trucks, delivery trucks, garbage trucks. Hopefully, a fire engine never has to show up, but I think you've got to limit this parking to one side of the street at all times.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, in my experience in different developments, that when we send these through, you know, with you guys and all the different departments, that that's one of the things that the fire department does look at, is how are they going to maneuver their truck in there? And if it doesn't meet to their standards, they would, they would recommend denial.
I'm not, I'm not saying to deny it for this, but I'm saying it's important to make sure you get proper access in there. sure you get proper access in there all the time.
Absolutely.
Last time we met upstairs in the study session, there was talk about basements. Do these units have basements?
No.
They're on cross, they're on slabs?
Yep.
Okay. And that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagna. Mr. Toramina, I believe you had a question?
A couple of comments based on the petitioner's questions or the commissioner's questions with respect to the retention area. The area along the south side of the property is much shallower. Like you said, it's a foot deep. It's probably closer to two feet. So it's a very shallow swell that runs along the back that'll pick up any water from, from the site and direct it to the east side, where it would then discharge into the storm system or go within that larger bio-retention area and infiltrate the ground. So I don't see that as being an obstacle to planting trees along the south side of the property. I think that we can create a wide enough shelf along the rear of the property where either one or two rows of pine trees can be added or supplemented. They've got several deciduous trees. Some of those trees are shown right within, right on the edge of that swell. So there's no reason we can't plant, intermix those with, with pine trees or spruce trees or whatever. This, and that's if that retention area cannot be relocated to the northwest corner of the site, which I think you suggested as being, you know, the first, a first option, if that's even possible. But if it's not possible based on the drainage of the site, then, then I don't think it precludes the possibility of planting along the south side of the property. Number two, more than likely, they're gonna have a one mailbox area for all 11 homes. It's probably gonna be on the north side of that street. We could probably add a couple of parking spaces along there, along with a small turnaround to facilitate, you know, whether it's the mail truck or other delivery trucks, and then guest parking. So a combined area, you know, either for that purpose or, you know, turnaround and parking spaces, plus the mail delivery, I think is all possible in that open area, which is just west of unit 11.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. Is there any other questions from any of our commissioners or our petitioner? And I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Ida, the, in discussing the parking on the street, you said, in response to the question about limiting parking to one side, that you said basically, if we could do that, as I understand it, these are private roads. So you can do pretty much whatever you want if this is a private road. You could ban parking on the street altogether. You could put it on one side. You could do these other things. Is that correct?
Well, when I, when I stated that, it's, well, it's a private road. You're correct. We can do that, yes. Short answer, yes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, 'cause on a private road, you have a lot more flexibility as to what you, what you can and can't do in terms of limiting activity on the street versus a public roadway, which would have, you'd have to conform more to city guidance. Okay. If there's no other questions from any of the commissioners, I'll ask one more time. I don't see anything. Let me just see if there's any comments from anyone in the audience, and then we'll give you a chance to come back up, Mr. Ida, afterward. Is there anyone in the audience who wants you to speak for or against? Please come to either one of the podiums that's closest to you. They both work. That way, we can hear you and our folks on the Watch Online can hear you as well. Just start with your name and address, please.
Glenn Openlander. I wrote that email.
Great.
Didn't know if I was gonna be able to make it. Business plan changed, so I'm here.
Well, we're glad you're here.
And I'm at 35824 Elmira, just on the south side of the wall there. Progress, it looks good and everything. The neighbor, I was looking to see, I thought they were gonna show. Guess I'm the representative of all those homes there. And it's a wall. If you, you know, were to come to our yards, it's just green. You can't see anything through it. We'll miss that. Progress, you know, I was wondering when the day would come. Our represent, I'm sorry, I forgot the name. Joe? Joe mentioned, you know, maybe leaving a couple little room for the trees that are there. Asking, please don't do that. It'll look like garbage. You know, a couple of old scraggly trees. I really think it would be best to just clear all of that. If, if it's gonna mostly be cleared, you know, what are two or three trees gonna do to block anything? And they're not pine or evergreen or anything, so I think it would look better if you just cleared it all out. And then I've got a picture of what one of the neigh, my neighbor next to me put in their yard, and there are these large, grew somewhat quickly, evergreen trees. I even broke a piece off to bring it if anybody would recognize it. But it, in the photo I took, if anybody's interested, I could show it to Joe afterwards, it looks very clean and neat. And if you leave anything there, I mean, there's this, it's all scrag, it's really rough. And if you leave, you know, like 10 feet of it, it's just gonna look terrible. And I think it would be really best to just clear that out. And these evergreens, they grow quickly, and they are a wall themselves. And it would look a lot neater, you know, they're in a row versus just brush, you know, 10 feet of brush is gonna do nothing and look garbagey, I think. So I guess that's my request, if you could consider that.
Okay, I think we got the, I think we got the idea. We don't wanna have back and forth.
No, no, I just, I'll be more, what I was saying to the commission through the chair, we'd be more than willing to sit down with the residents and go over all that, so we're all in concert of what they like.
Okay. Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Ida.
I was gonna offer that, too. Anyone's willing or more than welcome to come meet at our house and, you know, look in the yard and get a feel for what it looks like.
Sure, sure. We definitely appreciate those suggestions. Thank you.
I guess the only other thing is, there is that road coming in, and when cars come in, an evergreen might be really useful, because you don't, like, there's two, most of our homes are all two-story, and, you know, now you might have headlights coming in bedrooms and things that are kind of raised up above that wall. The homes are, it goes up a little bit. So if there's no, like, evergreens, I think people are, in some of those homes, you know, maybe ours, mine, I don't know, are gonna have headlights at night coming into our back of our house. So I'm just hoping the evergreens is something that...
I think you'll find that that, that actually isn't too much of an issue. It's a valid point to make, but the, these duplex units that they're looking at are fairly high-roofed in terms of the peak of the roof, and they also, some of them include a bonus room upstairs. So they are sort of like a Cape Cod, you know, with a small second story. So they'll, they'll block the light pretty well.
Okay.
It's not like it's a real low-to-the-ground ranch.
Yeah, just, I was concerned coming off of Plymouth Road, that, that road in the middle of the subdivision.
Got it.
I, I think it's literally coming at my neighbor's house.
Yeah.
You know, if, depending on the height of stuff.
Sure. It's something that we'll keep an eye on as we go through the process to make sure that that doesn't intrude on your...
Other than that, progress, in the past, other things were recommended to go in that lot, and it was shot down, and this is the best thing I've seen yet, so...
Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments, both email and for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? No one else coming forward? Mr. Ida, is there anything else that you wanted to comment on before we make our decision?
Just what I said earlier, I'd be more than happy to give this gentleman my phone number, and we could sit down. Like I said, we want to be good neighbors.
Okay, we appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from anyone in the commission? If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. The request to develop a planned residential development on properties at 35755 and 35841 Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval on the following conditions. Number one, the site plan identified as sheet CS 100, dated June 26, 2023, as revised, prepared by Angled Design and Engineering, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, the landscape planting plan identified as sheet LP 1, and the landscape notes and details identified as sheet LP 2- dated June 26, 2023, prepared by Naggy Devlin Land Design, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number three, all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights of way, shall be sotted instead of hydroseeding. Number four, underground sprinklers shall be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department, and after that, permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number five, the petitioner shall work with the staff and the Plymouth Road Development Authority on plans to install additional landscaping and other streetscape improvements, such as brick piers and fencing along Plymouth Road. Number six, the exterior building elevation plan identified as sheet A7, prepared by Dimensional Design LLC, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, the issues as outlined in the correspondence dated August 1, 2023, from the Fire Marshal, shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue. Number eight, the developer and all contractors and subcontractors shall employ best management practices to prevent, reduce, and mitigate the problems associated with soil erosion and airborne dirt and dust from migrating off-site, including provisions for erosion control barriers, daily street sweeping, watering, and halting earthwork activities on days when the wind conditions are likely to cause a problem. Number nine, only a conforming entrance marker is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number 10, all required cash deposits, certified checks, irrevocable bank letters of credit, and surety bonds shall be deposited with the city before the issuance of engineering permits. And number 11, under section 13 dot 13 of Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for one year only from the date of approval by the City Council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. We have a motion made by Mr. Long, supported by Ms. Donaro. To the maker of the motion, is there any changes that you would like to propose in terms of the landscaping discussion? There is noted in the petition, or it was read, that additional landscaping will be added near the entrance. Did you wanna also note around the perimeter?
Around the perimeter, we spoke about the east and western borders. So yes, that's fine to the satisfaction of the planning department.
Okay.
Pete, does that kind of bottle?
I agree with that completely. The only thing I'd amend, I'd add to that would be conifers along the southern border.
I can accept that as well, that amendment as well.
Okay. And the supporter is okay with those amendments?
Yep.
All right. Any other changes or...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagna.
How about parking, making a, Mark suggested a parking area, and then no parking on at least one side of that street for access purposes.
The maker is okay with that?
Maker is okay with that.
And supporter?
Support.
All right. Any other comments on the motion? I don't see any other comments. This is a motion to approve, again, by Mr. Long, supported by Donaro. If the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Ms. Donaro.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. That takes care of the public hearing section of our agenda. We now have one item on the miscellaneous section of our agenda, item number two.
Petition 2023-07-08-06, submitted by Leo Sauve Building Company LLC, requesting approval of the master deed bylaws and site plan pursuant to section 7.27 of Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, to develop a site condominium named Sunset View, consisting of 11 single-family homes on the property at 30250 Morlock, located on the west side of Sunset Avenue between Fargo and Eight Mile Road in the northwest quarter of section two.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. Again, this is a request to construct a site condominium that would be known as Sunset View. The site is on the west side of Sunset Avenue, which is south of Eight Mile and east of Merriman Road. The property is 2.82 acres in size. It is 132 feet deep by 923 feet in length. Little bit on the history of the site. In 2005, the property was rezoned from RUF Rural Urban Farm to R3, one-family residential. And one year later, in 2006, the city approved Sunset View condominiums, consisting of 10 conforming R3 lots. The project done by a previous owner of the property was never developed. And in 19, or excuse me, in 2021, with the adoption of the Livonia Vision zoning ordinance, the R3 district was eliminated and replaced with the N2 zoning. And as a result, the minimum required lot width was reduced from 80 feet to 70 feet. Directly across Sunset Avenue, there are homes that are zoned N2, one-family residential. To the west are the Whispering Woods Apartments, zoned NM1. And then to the south are residential homes, also zoned N2. And then directly to the north are industrial properties, mostly zoned M1, like manufacturing. So all 11 site condominiums would front on the existing Sunset Avenue, which has a right-of-way width of 55 feet. Lots 1 through 10 would all measure 70 feet in width by 132 feet in depth. Lot 11, which is the northernmost site, would measure 168 feet in width by 132 feet in depth. And in comparison, the lots across the street are all over 80 feet in width, reflecting the zoning that was in place in 1996, at the time Sunset subdivision was planted, which was R3, as I noted previously. The plans do show a bio-retention basin. This would run along the south, north, and west sides of the development. That basin would be approximately 62 feet in width at the north end of the project, adjacent to unit 11. It would be 18 feet wide on the west side, along the rear of all 11 units. And then at the south end, adjacent to unit 1, the basin would be about 55 feet in width. This feature would be planted with a wetland seed mix and would provide onsite treatment of all the stormwater runoff. There is landscaping, a tree shown being planted for each lot, as required by the ordinance. The plans do not show a sidewalk, although one will be required. So the sidewalk is gonna have to continue along the west side of the street as part of this development. It would be allowed one sign, a maximum of 20 square feet in area and 5 feet in height. There are no drawings specific for the homes, although the petitioner has brought some renderings and can describe those a little bit, in a little bit greater detail this evening. We do have a set of master deed and bylaws for the site, where it does indicate that the exterior of all the units, the multi-story residences, will be at least 65% brick, and then on the ranchers, they'll be 80% brick, with minimum lot sizes or home sizes, for the ranches being 1,300 square feet. And then on the Cape Cod's or Colonial, the minimum home size would be 1,500 square feet. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from our engineering division that reads, "In accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time, but would like to note the following items. Number one, the subject parcel is assigned the address of 30250 Morlock Avenue. Once the plans have been submitted for permits, the engineering department will assign addresses to the individual units. Number two, the legal descriptions included with the submitted drawings both close per surveying standards, but there are multiple discrepancies between the description shown on the title page and on the topographic and boundary survey sheet. The owner should provide one description that matches on all sheets. Number three, the existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer, Water Main and Storm Sewer. The submitted drawings indicate extensions of the existing utilities to service the proposed units, which we do not believe will impact the existing systems negatively. Number four, the proposed development will be required to meet the way..." Number four, the proposed development will be required to meet the Wayne County stormwater ordinance. Per the submitted drawings, stormwater detention is indicated, but we will need to do a thorough review of the plans once they are submitted for permitting. Per the proposed layouts, all storm sewers, including detention basins, will be privately owned. Sanitary sewer water main will be public, located within dedicated easements on the site or in the existing right-of-way. Number six, the submitted drawings do not show sidewalks along the front of the proposed condominiums, which are required with all new developments. The sidewalk, excuse me, should be shown on the drawings unless waived by City Council, and it should connect to the existing sidewalk at the north end of the development. Number seven, no construction or soil disturbance, including dumping of material, should occur on the site until the owner obtains the appropriate permits. And number eight, the master deed and bylaws that were submitted on July twenty-sixth do not include the referenced Exhibit B drawings which show proposed easements, so we are not able to review those items at this time. Since those items are vital to the placement of the site utilities, it is our position, position that the petition should not be approved until all of the pertinent information has been submitted for review. And I'll just note that that information has been supplied to the city."
All right, thank you.
Next is a letter from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated August first that reads, "We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations. Fire access road shall be provided with not less than twenty feet of unobstructed width and have a minimum of thirteen feet six inches of vertical clearance. Number two, any curves or corner streets shall accommodate emergency vehicles with a turning radius of fifty-three feet wall-to-wall and an inside turning radius of twenty-nine feet six inches. And three, standard for residential cul-de-sacs is fifty feet with a minimum right-of-way radius of sixty feet to provide sidewalks for utilities. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that's a letter signed by Brian Kokla, Fire Marshal, of course. There are no changes to the street system in this case, so most of those points are not applicable. Second, or the next item is a letter dated July twenty-sixth, and it's from the Division of Police, assigned by Paul Walters, Sergeant of Traffic Bureau. He indicates that he has no objections to the proposal. Similar letter of no objection coming from the Inspection Department dated August first and signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. A letter of no objection from the Department of Finance dated August third and signed by Connie Campula. And a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated July twenty-fifth and signed by Linda Sheel, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina, is there any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions, our petitioner's representative is in the audience, please come forward again. Good evening.
Joeyda again for Leo Sauve.
Thank you, sir, and anything else you would like to add to the presentation?
The sidewalks, absolutely, we are putting them in. And there was also, I think, question about fencing in the back, which is going to be vinyl fencing. And the one fence that's in the front there, that is, I think is the black chain link fence, that's going to be removed. I think those were the questions in hand last meeting.
Okay, thank you for addressing those issues. Let's see if there's any other questions for you from any of our commissioners. Any questions for our petitioner? No questions at all?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
Joe, thanks for answering those questions, those sidewalk and fencing questions. What are the, what's the proposed size of these houses you're going to put in there? Square feet?
Square feet, probably between eighteen hundred, two thousand, except for the ranches, as Mark said, you know. And we're hoping to keep them in the low fours.
Okay, and you've got pictures here to, these are, these are renderings of what they may look like?
Yes, correct.
Will they have, will they have concrete driveways or asphalt driveways, what do they have?
No, concrete driveways, I don't believe in the ordinance you can have asphalt drivers, so there would be concrete driveways.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna, any other questions for our petitioner? If there's no other questions for our petitioner, then I'll go to our audience to see if there's any comments from anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition. Please come to either one of the podiums. That's fine, we, we'll be here as long as you need to be.
Hi.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, I'm Juliette Abbott, two zero two two six Sunset Street. Represented here are all but two houses. We are small but mighty, so eight out of ten houses are represented in the audience right now.
That's wonderful.
So this plan has come to you all, maybe in a different rendition, five times, okay? Or thereabouts, and each time it has been denied for a variety of reasons. And I realized a few years ago that the ordinance did change. We didn't know that when we purchased our home, as did, I think, everyone on the street. I think I can speak for most of you. We bought our home because of the wooded area. That, I think, was, for my husband and I personally, fifty percent of the reason, was the secluded nature of the property. And we had good confidence that nothing would be built there, because on the other side, as you can see, there are apartments. So we are blocked from the view of these apartments by beautiful trees that have been there for so long. If you drive down our street, they are over a hundred feet tall. They're gorgeous and should be preserved, our green spaces are necessary. In terms of the data, I have to politely disagree with your sewage, I'm not sure what department it is, but the water and sewer. As someone who lives on that street, I can say with confidence that anytime it rains, the area across where they're proposing these buildings, it turns into a marsh. If you walk back there, it is soggy. The road in front, the dead man's curve, as we call it, floods every single time that it rains heavily. So to add more houses there, to lose the green space that right now contains much of the water that falls, I think will put an undue burden on that sewer system. The road is not wide, if you park one car there, two cars cannot pass. We have this issue with trucks coming in and out for deliveries. Ten or eleven, excuse me, eleven more houses in that area, when across the street, we have more space and less houses, is going to be pretty congested. Currently, the snowplows do not service our streets. We collectively, as a team of residents, service our streets. And lastly, the butterflies. Butterflies are endangered species, across the street from us, there is milkweed all along that property. We enjoy the butterflies every year, and that's going to be a next step if it goes there. But we are very much against any building in that area, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, hello again.
Hello. Did we play soccer together? You do look very familiar to me.
That's, that's another day.
Yes.
Anyway, as she was saying, everyone along the-
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. My name is Donald Brockway, two zero two three four Sunset. Like my neighbor was saying, we're a small street, everybody knows each other. Most of the street has small children, that being a dead end, kind of a dead end, everybody kind of is able to go out in the street and play, and, and we have all that area. The woods, the kids go back there, at one point, there was almost a trail for everybody to walk on. We very much did not expect anything to be, to happen with the woods. Like she said, the secludedness and, and, and the woods being there was a big part of buying the home in that area. Several of the other residents of this neighborhood, this street, have voiced an opinion of possibly moving if there's going to be new construction. I, I would hate to see for a mass exodus from that street, especially when it's not a very good time to buy homes. These trees block the apartments that are on the other side of the woods. Nothing wrong with apartments, we just like our trees in the neighborhood and the aesthetics that we have. They cut about fifteen, twenty feet into the woods when they had to remove brush for the electrical lines this past year. And it, and now we're starting to see the apartments as it is. With this proposed plan, we will all be able to see the tops of the apartments, the, the areas that's going on there, and in some places on the street, we'll be able to see all the way till Merriman. It, it's a big buffer between the, the main roads and then the apartments. If we're putting another set of houses there, it just seems like it would be too congested. You had mentioned about the fire trucks in the streets. Anytime, even the garbage trucks, which are shorter than the fire trucks, come down the streets, when they get to the end, they have to back up and make a two or three-point turn to come back down the street. We've had several large delivery trucks that have had to come down there, and they've actually backed up into the woods and broken all kinds of trees because they couldn't turn around. It is, it is very narrow, and it, you know, if we do have some people that are parking on the street, we wouldn't be able to have that on the other side, it would be too many cars back and forth. I don't know that we have any legal ramifications, it's just that a good majority of us don't want the woods to go. And I don't know how far that goes with, with planning and construction, or how, how far that is. But we just wanted to be heard. In addition, there's been some, some talk about the particular company that's putting in these houses as far as their track record. Maybe I shouldn't speak on that? Is that, Mr. Long, is that what you're shaking your head at?
Mr. Long, feel free to comment if you wish.
I, I mean, it's just open source, it seems like there's a lot of people that are very unhappy with that particular company. Long, long times for building, projects being overdue, things not being up to code or up to... But that's, you know, this could be anybody building houses there, it's not just this company, so maybe we'll leave that out.
Yeah, I think the key thing is, is to focus on, on the fact that houses are being proposed there as opposed to the, the actual person that's going to put them in.
Okay.
And, you know, what, what concerns do you have about residential development across the street from your house?
If they are to be put in, it's just going to be overly crowded, in, in my belief. And that we also would want houses that are going to be, if, if they did put something there, we would want something that's going to be equal to the same types of property that we have, so everybody keeps the same land value as we have now. Nothing's going to be decreased or increased, or things of that nature. We all do like the butterflies, as you were saying. I don't have anything additional at this time.
We appreciate your comments, Mr. Brockway, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please come forward.
Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Clara Lawrence, I live at two zero two 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 Sunset. I'm the original owner when the homes were built in nineteen ninety-seven. I saw my home being built. I saw my neighbors move in. I saw children being born. Right now, I'm a single woman living on this street. I'm the only grandmother on the street to ten, almost eleven, little children under the age of ten. I porch sit, I know my neighbors, I love my neighbors. I love the animals that come to our forest across the street. And two of us, we all have forests in our backyard, two of us do not have fences in our backyard. So the deer, the rabbits, everything comes from across the street that you're planning to destroy and travel through our two backyards to go to the next forest, to go to the next forest, and the next forest. I think you all know that animals are in big trouble because of our community developments. And I hope and pray that this new development does not go through. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments, anyone else wishing to speak, feel free to come forward. Good evening, sir.
Hi, and I apologize, this is my first time ever doing anything like this, so I am scared poopless.
Oh, don't be, we're, we're very, we're very easygoing.
Michael Doyle, two zero two one zero Sunset S- Street. And I do have a small speech issue, so I apologize if it holds this, this up. First of all, I am the first house, as you come on, on what she called the dead man's curve. If you can imagine coming down a road, there's a curve, and then there's a curve right after that. I am on that corner. She had mentioned about kids on the block. We do have ten, and I have one coming in two months. And it's my, it's going to be my third in the house, my second, my wife's third. And just to give you some backstory, when I met my wife, I owned a house in Berkeley, Michigan. I loved Berkeley, I grew up in Berkeley, I wanted to live there my entire life. Once I saw this house in this area, I wanted to move to her house, and I sold mine to move onto our block. And I'm sorry, this is kind of a emotional thing, because I really love our block, as you can tell, we're almost all here. I just, I've seen cars, delivery trucks, people who don't unders, who don't know our block, whip around that corner, and I work in my, in my living room, right next to the big window, so I see every car coming. I'm kind of that guy who is like, hey, there's a person trying to survey out there, and, and I'm telling them, them all about it. So I love this block, and actually, they've covered most of my topics. It was mostly, you know, we have a lot of young kids, and adding twenty more cars onto our block, having parking on both sides, and on that road, you don't have to pull your car in at night. So if you have parking on both sides at night, now you're trying to get things going. I don't believe we have lights on our road, we don't have lights on our road. She had mentioned the animals, there are multiple families that there are living in those woods. And in our little area of, say, between Eight and Seven Mile, Merriman to Middlebelt, there's probably seven or eight families that I've seen. They, there's two or three families in that area alone, so now they're going to be going to other areas, or they're going to be eating up our gardens, or doing this or that, or they're going to be coming in our yards and leaving texts, things like that. They're in a happy place there, this is going to sound kind of weird, I actually named them because I work from, you know, right there, and it's like, oh, hey, John. But I'm sorry, that was dumb. But yeah, just mainly, you know, one concern that I had was that when I did talk to one of our neighbors who is not here, she said this, has been tried five times, it's been failed five times. And so I would like to understand, you know, if you have time, after I talk, why this has changed with, with, you know, with the changes a couple of years ago. But I also want to bring up, I called a couple of months ago, and I asked, and I, it took a couple of times to get in touch with the right person, but they had measured it out and said it's one hundred and thirty feet. And I didn't know if that was like depth, or width, or, you know, or, you know, this or that. The person on the phone told me would be, one hundred and fifty feet would be required, and so it would have to be rezoned. So I felt better, because he told me I would get a, a letter about that. When I called three weeks ago to find out when this was going to be on the agenda, they said if it has to be re, re, rezoned, that not only us, but people on the other blocks would be told, and that they could also come. And we didn't get anything, so I'm assuming it has to do with the thing that happened a couple of years ago, which we, we didn't get anything on. I know that there is probably five or six people on the other dead end next to us who are fully against it, because they will be impacted, and there's people even over on Fargo. She didn't have time to write in, and she's hurt right now, and she couldn't come in. But she's even worried about the traffic on Fargo as well coming in. I am not against growth of the city, I love this city. I've been here now for six years, and I have no problem with growth. But when I look at the whole idea of the reason why I wanted to move to this city, and, and mind you, this is my own personal thing, taking down those woods and putting up homes, and, you know, just adding in more cars, more congestion, more chances for one of our ten, eleven kids to be hit, you know, that does make me worry. And the last thing that I will say, I did make a lot of notes here, but the last thing that I'll say is, I just, I just hope that you do take our words into heart and understand where we're coming from. where we're coming from, where we came as a, you know, a, a small army, if you will. And I hope that if, if this does pass, and, you know, we don't have a chance to say no, that the developer would work with us to try and eliminate most of our concerns.
Well, thank you, Mr. Doyle, for coming up and speaking. You did a great job.
Thank you so much.
And what I, what I can say is, I'm not going to get into a back and forth as to, you know, why this petition is here before us today, other than to say that, that this property is owned by, by a, an individual. They have a right to develop, or to propose development on that property. So that's what they're, they're coming to us now. They've done that in the past. Perhaps it's been different owners, I'm not sure of the exact background scenario, but at any point, anybody that owns property is always willing and capable of coming to us to ask. You know, it's our job to look at that and say, is it appropriate, you know, is this the best development for that property? Is it the best use of the property? We evaluate all those factors, what residents in the area have to say, and so on, and, and try to make the best decision we can.
Yes.
And our decision is a recommending decision, which will go on to City Council with that recommendation. So ultimately, they will make the final decision. But just to give you at least a little bit of that background.
Yes.
And, and explain some of those things. And you are correct that the zoning change that occurred a couple of years ago, which occurred throughout the city, all, all areas and all zoning were pretty much affected by that, did change some of the dimensions and so on.
Okay.
And is probably facilitating why this is looking a little bit different than it may have before.
Okay. And then also, I just, sorry, last thing, I promise. She talked about how we all kind of pitch in and do the road. I've lived here for six years. I've seen a plow once, and that was after we had taken care of the road. I'm that first house as you come in, and I can tell you right now, there is water buildup there all of the time. So if that forest isn't able to absorb all of that, then I would have even more worries about, about that. So thank you for your time.
We appreciate that comment. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Feel free to come forward. And good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Mullner. I live at two zero two one eight Sunset. A lot of my notes have already been brought up, one of which you were speaking upon the rezoning, and how it's conveniently gotten smaller. And with the proposal, counting the units, that would allow for one more house to be developed on the opposite side of our block. Also, it was mentioned that sidewalk would have to be placed as well, limiting even more space for anybody that moves in. So anybody that moves in is already given very limited space. It's been brought up that we have ten children that have free range of this wonderful part of Livonia that we all chose for the same reasons. We would all be directly impacted, some of which are considering moving, which would impact me, which would impact us, because we are more than a community. You know, these are my neighbors. We look out for each other. Our children play together. I'm not opposed to new families joining our block, but I do have safety concerns. Our street is not very wide, as it's already been brought up. If we have more homes, you could assume that they're going to want to park in the road as well, which would only allow one lane of traffic. And if we have trucks, a fire truck, an ambulance that needs to get down there quickly, I wouldn't want those emergency vehicles to have to weave in and out of parked traffic. Another concern of mine is our elderly neighbor, who we consider our neighborhood grandmother. How long is this construction going to be for eleven homes, one lane of traffic? I just recently lost my grandmother, and I wouldn't want anybody else to be put in this situation. My grandmother was going through the same thing. She was going to have construction down the road, and that was the big concern of ours. What if an emergency vehicle needed to make it to Grandma's? They wouldn't be able to do it. She would have to go pick up her mail somewhere different for months. We're, we're not, we're not going to do that. We're, we're standing up, we're voicing our opinions, but it's mainly a concern of safety for me. I am the neighbor that made a nature trail in the woods for our children, called it a dino trail. It's already been impacted by DTE removing about thirty feet of the woods, which really blocked the sound barrier, the light barrier between our block and the apartment buildings. Once those trees were removed, oh, you knew those apartments were there. And when we first moved there, I promise you, I didn't even know apartments were there until a year after we moved in. You know, that following winter, when the leaves fell. Brought up the nature, the beauty. For us to make even more of an impact on the nature, I think rezoning and making things smaller makes it convenient for bigger business to come in and make some money. I guess that's what this world's all about, is making money. But we're family men here. It's not about making money. It's about family and keeping people safe. So my main concern is the safety with the development of this, and the time period that it's going to take for that, and the impact that it'll have on my children's upbringing. I don't see them playing in the front yard when there's bulldozers. You know, that's just a safety concern. I'm also the one neighbor that doesn't have a fence. I let my chickens run free, my chickens being my children. So I just wanted to thank you for your time. I greatly appreciate it. Please take our thoughts and consideration.
Definitely. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any others wishing to speak? Feel free to come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Randall Schmidt. I'm at two zero two 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 Sunset. And I don't care about the woods. I know someone owns it, it's private property. I've represented plenty of people who've done developments, but I wouldn't represent someone who was doing this development. I would, the previous one was a very nice use of space. To get the proper zoning for an abandoned industrial space or commercial space and put in housing, that's a great use of land, and it's a great duty for the city to provide. This is not. That road is soft asphalt, and like Ryan said, if you have construction on that street up and down there for at least a good year, probably two for eleven houses, you're going to destroy the street, and it is not a conforming street that they would build in Livonia now with twice. You cannot park two cars and get through, maybe on a bicycle or walk. And I don't know if that's been even looked at by the city engineers or planning, but I, I can't imagine. The curbs will get destroyed, and it's, it was a shoddy construction in the first place in nineteen ninety-six. It wasn't, not a lot of things were up to snuff, not just with the houses, but with the roads and the sidewalks. But I, I think it's a terrible use and a terrible approval of this project, considering that road and who lives on it, and the nature of the road. And if anyone has been down that road, you could probably have a good-sized pickup truck or a moving truck that would destroy that, the surface on the tarmac. So that's my concern. The woods are great, and it is kind of putting a square peg in a round hole at this point to chop that off. And there's probably five hundred apartments there. There are halogen lights, there's buzzing, there's all kinds of noise, and to just cut that land out of the middle of, and that square mile there is a very wooded area. And like Clara said, the deer go through there, the turkeys go through there. That's just really, I think that's a poor use of the management abilities for the city to allow someone to stick houses in there just because there's land. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Feel free to come forward. Good evening. Hello, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Glenn. I live at two zero two three eight Sunset, and I've worked for the second largest developer in the United States. So believe me when I say I am pro-development. But when I talked to my coworkers, they agreed with me that this was not a good idea, and they were on my side, and they said exactly what I said. If I was in the, these shoes, I would not be allowing development here. For one, I know all the children have been brought up. I personally have a special needs child. She doesn't know the meaning of stop when we try to tell her not to run into the street. Adding more chaos, cars, it's just going to make things so much harder for even the typical child. And like other people have said, that curve, I've had my car personally stop there and not be able to move, and Mike luckily was outside that day and was able to help me push my car. So I can't imagine all the large trucks, the other cars, that are going to congest this little area. And the other thing is just the noise. It is loud enough. I work from home, and the work that's being done on Eight Mile is already very loud. There's a lot of, like, auto construction kind of work that goes on there. And just to add more people, more sounds during our workday, it's very difficult. I know several of us do work from home all the time, so that's just a huge inconvenience for all of us that are trying to be productive during our day. That's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? Miller Taker, good evening, ma'am.
Hi. I live at two zero two four two Sunset Street, and I've lived there since nineteen ninety-six, my husband and I. We were one of the original owners. We bought the last house available, and that is one of the reasons why we bought there, because of the property. And we never had kids, but I have seen three generations of kids just like these people with, in the area. They've come and gone for other reasons, bigger houses, whatever. My main concern is, well, I have a couple of concerns, the trees, and the privacy, and the noise from the apartments. We're going to see dumpsters are on the back. We don't know what's going to come from them dumpsters. It could be rats, we don't know. And I live in the lot where you see eight miles, and I, my trees are all falling down because of the weather, and I have to see all these construction vehicles, first of all, which is ridiculous. And now I got to look at apartments through more houses. And it is a safety concern for all the kids. I do agree with all of these people here. And I just think there isn't enough room to do all of the planning. And then the other thing I, and I just heard tonight, the size of the houses. We all have fifteen, sixteen hundred square foot houses, pretty much sixteen hundred. Now you bring in these eighteen hundred square foot houses, two thousand square foot houses, who's going to want to buy our house when we go to sell it? Because they want the bigger houses. They don't want our little houses that have been there for twenty years. So I don't really want those houses developed for all of the reasons that I've stated, and pretty much what everybody else has said, so.
Can I ask?
It'd be a travesty, I think, to see all this going.
If you don't mind, can I ask one question, and just to get your name for our record?
Oh, Diane Hill.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? One more gentleman. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Paul Abbott. I live at two zero, sorry. I live at two zero two two six Sunset. I'll be okay. Just give me a second.
Sure, take your time.
I'm in support of everything. Can you read this? I don't know why I'm having an issue with this. Do I need to say this, or she, can she read what I'm saying?
She, she can, she can help you.
I'm, I'm support, like, the congestion would be ridiculous, having trucks coming in all the time. In, in winter, when the leaves fall off of the trees, the lights from the apartments, like, they shine in to our house. So it's, it's a problem. But when, in the summer, in the spring, it's, it's not an issue, so. The delivery trucks, as well, I have to, I have to say, they, they can be a problem, as well, often they use our driveway to turn around. They don't, again, because at the end, it's a very tight turn, so oftentimes, the trucks will use my driveway to turn around, which I'm not opposed to, but I didn't know about the asphalt. Like, I didn't know that was an issue. Fargo, by the way, is a bus route. So anyway, there's a bus that goes down Fargo, anyway. I don't know how much that would impact trucks delivering supplies and whatnot, but also Fargo never gets plowed at all. And how that's a bus route and never gets plowed, I don't know. But the houses, also, these houses that are proposed, their backyards would be the apartments. So in terms of size, I, I, I wouldn't want to live in something like that. I understand that they would be nice houses and good size, but to have apartments as your backyard, that, I, I would be opposed to that. And also, my wife and I...
Just take a deep breath, it's fine.
We love living here. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. We appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this? I think we've covered everybody that's from the residents, so thank you for speaking. Mr. Ede, would you like to address anything that was discussed? Again, we don't, we don't want to create a back and forth debate, but if there's anything that was addressed, or anything that was raised that you would like to address, feel free to us.
I mean, we, we are very sensitive of the traffic. They are right, it, it, there will be some congestion. I'm not, we're not going to sit here and lie to anybody, but that's during business hours, you know? I mean, we're not going to have guys there at night when the kids come home from school or anything like that. And if they are, if they hire somebody to plow the snow, we'll be more than happy to chip in on that, to plow the snow, too.
Okay.
I can't speak for any new residents that go in there.
Right. Right. Okay. Is there any questions from any of the commissioners to our petitioner, Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Ede, can you, are, are there going to be dumpsters there? Or are you going to do curbside trash pickup?
I believe that's curbside trash pickup over there.
The big curbside?
Yeah, we're going to be putting dumpsters at a residential site now. During construction, we'll, we will have the, the large dumpsters, but they will be on the site.
Yeah. But on an ongoing basis, there will be no dumpsters?
No.
Okay. When do you anticipate, if this is approved, when do you anticipate you'd start construction?
Well, by the time we get to City Council and everything, probably either late fall or early spring.
And how long would you anticipate it would go on?
If, if I was to answer that question, I'd be a liar, too, because it just depends on, it depends on the market.
Your best guess?
Yeah, it depends on the market. One, one resident said two years. I'm going to go with that. I would say at tops would be two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? Yeah, please, please stay up there for, we may have some additional questions.
Yes, no?
You got my questions.
All right, yeah, I've got, I've got a couple.
Mr. Care Magnum?
Okay. Joe, who, that's a private road, so how do you split the ownership of a private road for access to your condos?
I, I did not know it was a private road.
Is, is it, is it not a private road, Joe, Mark?
Public road.
Public road, but the, the city doesn't maintain it?
The first I've ever heard that it doesn't get plowed, that, that was a little surprising to me.
We, we know, we know.
I mean, that's a question for DPW, why they wouldn't care, you know, wouldn't plow that road. I'm, I was not aware of that.
Okay, so that, that is a city street?
It's a public road, yeah.
City, public street, okay. I, I was...
It should be a, the city maintains street, yeah.
Okay, so there, there's no issue there?
That was a platted, that's part of a platted subdivision, so it's absolutely a public road.
All right, sorry for being, being confused there. If there's any, if there's any damage to the road as a result of, of this potential subdivision, or eleven houses going in there, what, who maintains the road if there's damage done with the, with heavy equipment coming down there?
There's typically bonds posted that would ensure, you know, that the road be properly maintained through construction, and any damage, those bonds would be forfeited, or they'd have to make the corrections to any roads that's a result of the construction. So there are bonds that are posted.
I would assume it's reviewed before and after?
Yes, that's all handled through our engineering division. That's correct.
Okay. As far as the large trees go in the back... Okay. Um, as far as the large trees go in the back, I heard some of the folks mention the large trees shield the, uh, shield the apartments, and the utility company came and took some trees down, which I believe is closer to the apartment side of that property. Is, is that right? So what's down is down, and Joe, is there any chance that you can leave some big trees on the back, back of that property, or is that not really feasible?
We want to leave as much trees as possible, but, um, part of the plan, I think the city wants us to do this too, is to put a vinyl fence in the back, so we would have to tear down any of those trees, that we'd have to put a vinyl, vinyl fence in the back. The, to tear down those trees was DTE, not us, because there's probably wire there, and that's why they did it. So we didn't, we didn't go there and tear trees down.
So have you, in, in your plans for developing, have you looked and seen if there's large trees that can stay as a result of developing this property, or they, or they just mostly got to come down to allow for access?
No, if they're good, if they're nice trees, we want them to stay, because it makes, it, it makes it nicer for us too, as a, as a developer for sale, because we don't want to build 11 houses and just sit on them. We want to sell them. And one of the things we do look at is what trees we could keep, and, um, most cities, as Mark probably would tell you, there's also tree ordinances, so you can't just rip down whatever you want anytime you want.
No, it's, it's beneficial for you to leave as many as you can.
It is, yes.
It's less expensive to, to, to have to take, not have to take them down, and it would be more satisfactory probably to the residents if you could keep some of the large trees in there.
Absolutely.
Um... That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magna. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Wong?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ida, um, I guess my one, my largest concern with this is the, the intention to put 11 houses in, uh, but on the other side there, you only have, I think it's, it's 10, and so you're going to have kind of squeezed in, and the driveways aren't going to line up, and, you know, it is, it's been pointed out that it's a real narrow street. So I, I'm sure there are many reasons for the desire to put 11 sites in there, but was consideration given to only putting 10 in?
I would have to talk to Mr. Solve. I couldn't answer that for you. I mean, that's a, you know, I mean, as, as it sits right now, it, it is, with the 11, it's meeting and/or exceeding all requirements to the zoning.
Yes, it is. Um, understand that. I just, uh, you know, that's my concern about that is it, it, I do, I do see the safety concerns of that and some of the problems that that could present. But, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
A question for Mr. Toramina. Uh, I'm under, I'm under the impression that this plan conforms in every way with the current zoning ordinance. Is that true?
In terms of the lot dimensions and everything else, that is correct.
Density, okay. Um, there's been some concern expressed about the width of the road. Does it, is it unusual to have a road this width in the city?
Uh, the rights of way, um, vary. A standard residential street is 60 feet in width, uh, the right-of-way that is. That would include the sidewalks on either side, uh, and then the, uh, the road itself. From curb to curb is typically, uh, around 35 feet in width. However, they vary in many cases. Our older subdivisions have them anywhere from 25 to 28, 29, 30 feet. This is roughly, this is somewhere between 28 and 30 feet, I believe, this Sunset Avenue. Uh, the 55-foot right-of-way is not uncommon. We have many streets that are, uh, rights-of-way that are 50 feet, but the typical, uh, the standard right-of-way for residential street is 60 feet, so.
Okay, and finally, uh, there's expressed concern about drainage. And my understanding is that the petitioners providing drainage areas on-site so that any, any runoff is contained on the site, as opposed to...
That is correct.
Migrating over to the condos, over to the apartments or to the homes across the street.
Uh, that's something that the engineering department will review, um, to make sure that that is the case when the final design is approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. Any other questions from any of our commissioners? I don't see any other questions. Uh, Mr. Ida, is there anything else that you'd like to add before we make our decision?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
Uh, the, the lot furthest to the north is, is quite large, um, considerably larger than the other lots. Has there been any consideration to maybe putting a little, uh, making that lot smaller and put in a playground area over there?
We haven't, we haven't discussed that, no.
Would there be space for it?
I don't know, until I, I sit down with our engineers to find out.
Mark, how big is that, is that last lot?
Um, I think we noted in the presentation, it was 100 and, excuse me.
Uh, yeah, you did.
Apology.
168.
Yes, that's correct.
Ha, ha, has Solve Building done something like that in other areas? Put a little playground area, put a little, little area for the children to play?
I can't answer that question, because I just started representing Mr. Solve.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Toramina. Wasn't, wasn't a playground-type facility part of the Washington, was it Washington Woods or something down by Hickson, Ann Arbor Road?
Correct. In that case, um, a portion of the land was dedicated to the city, uh, for a playground, uh, and that's the area right at the corner.
Right.
So, but that was, that was, that became a public park, uh, in this particular case. Um, I don't think there'd be any interest on the, on the part of Parks and Rec, uh, maintaining such a small area.
Right.
With any type of structure, that would, that would have to be something that would have to go before the Parks Commission. Uh, if it was done here, it would have to be part of the condominium association's responsibility for ownership and maintenance.
Right, as a private, privately owned park. Okay. It's just, uh, just a thought, it's one of the only times I can think of something like that being done, but yeah, that's...
Just, just a question, yeah.
It's a good question.
So, so right now, the legal description for Unit 11 includes that portion of the, uh, the area for bio-retention. That doesn't have to be the case. That, that's probably more apt to be part of a common, um, area element. Uh, but it does, that is an area where bio-retention is shown, so it would be limited for any type of, um, playground area, you know, without knowing the final design, um, there, whether or not it would be usable for any type of active play area would be, would, would have to be investigated further.
Okay. All right. And I will just make a couple notes as, uh, as some of our audience may not realize, I, I'm limited in what I can, uh, comment on or discuss, because I, as chairman, I can't be doing anything that sways, uh, any decision-making. But I, I did want to make a couple notes that, as I read through the minutes of the original development of Sunset View, uh, which is your property, uh, which I remember happening back, uh, in, in the early 2000s, um, I've been around doing this for a while. Uh, originally it was proposed to be 11 lots, and then was lessened down to 10 lots, and, uh, you're under, you do also have water retention that was required as part of that development, and it's done as an underground development. There's no above-ground water retention, uh, facility. It's, it's all placed underground because of the limited size of your site. So just a couple notes there of differences between, uh, that petition and this one. I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, is there any other questions or comments from any of, uh, commissioners?
I have one more.
Mr. Wong?
Mark, it, it came up a handful of times that this has been presented to us, or presented to the planning commission or some kind of city body about five times. I, I don't recall seeing this before. Do you know the history of, uh, other attempts to develop this parcel?
Yeah, so the, um, there's been multiple, or there have been more than one attempt to rezone the property, uh, but the successful rezoning petition occurred in 2005, as I noted in, uh, in my presentation. Uh, the site condominium approval, uh, was in, I think, 2006. So I may have that, I may have those years, um, of 2005, it was rezoned in 2006, I believe, is when the city approved the site condominium for the 10 lots, as Mr., as the chairman indicated.
Right, okay, I do see that. Thank you.
But prior to that, there were attempts to rezone that were unsuccessful.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Uh, any other questions, comments? If not, then a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'll offer an approving resolution that the request to develop the site condominium on the property at 30250 Morlock Avenue is hereby approved and subject to city council approval in the following conditions. Number one, the site plan identified as sheet C S dash 100 dated August 1st, 2023, is revised, prepared by Angled Design and Engineering, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, the landscape plan identified as sheet LP1, and the landscape notes in detail does identify as sheet LP2 dated July 20th, 2023, prepared by Nagy Dublin Land Design, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number three, all disturbed lawn areas, including roads right-of-way, shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding. Number four, number four, underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number five, a sidewalk shall be installed throughout the development to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Number six, the condominium master deed and bylaws comply with the requirements of the subdivision control ordinance, Title 16, Chapter 16 dot 04 through 16 dot 40 of the Livonia Court of Ordinances and Section 7 dot 27 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended. Number seven, the petitioner shall include language in the master deed and bylaws that require the condominium association to reimburse the city for any maintenance or repair costs incurred for the stormwater detention, retention, and outlet facilities, and gives the city the right to impose liens in the event charges are not paid within 30 days. Number eight, the site shall meet either the City of Livonia or Wayne County Storm Water Management Ordinance, whichever applies, and the developer shall secure a soil erosion and sedimentation control permit before commencing any grading activities on the site. Number eight, the developer and all contractors and subcontractors shall employ best management practices to prevent, reduce, and mitigate the problems associated with soil erosion and airborne dirt and dust from migrating off-site, including provisions for erosion control barriers, daily street sweeping, watering, and halting earthwork activities on days when wind conditions are likely to cause a problem. Number 10, only conforming interest marker is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number 11, all required cash deposits, certified checks, irrevocable bank letters of credit and/or surety bond shall be deposited with the city prior to the issuance of the engineering permits and... Number 12, pursuant to Section 13 dot 13 of Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the city council, and unless building permits, a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support? Support? All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve, made by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Care Magna. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Care Magna votes aye. Mrs. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Wong?
No.
Mr. Wilshaw?
Votes no. Motion passes. That's, uh, three to two. And we'll go on to city council recommending, uh, recommending approval. So, uh, thank you, Elle, for coming tonight, and, uh, wish you good luck with your projects. Thank you, everyone, for coming. There is one item left on our agenda, that is the approval of minutes.
Approval of the minutes of the 1,202nd public hearing and regular meeting held by the planning commission on July 25th, 2023.
That was a lengthy meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Some have.
We hired Ms. De Naro and support by Mr. Wong?
Support.
All right, we have De Naro and Wong to approve. If there's, uh, no objection, I think we can safely show five on that. I hear no objections, so we'll mark that down. That takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, a, uh, motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
And support, supported by Mr. Ventura. That's a motion to adjourn. De Naro and Ventura. Uh, again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show five on that as well. No objections from anybody, so we will note that the, uh, meeting is adjourned at this time. We want to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community, and with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting tonight at, uh, 8:47 PM. Good night, Livonia.